Located as Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements to the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for the board members, all are present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Village's website, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once I, the Chair, have a list of all public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time up to an additional three minutes may be granted by motion of the Village Board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to the clerks office at tilleypark.org or by placing their written request in the drop box at the Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted via a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Glatz.
Present.
Very good. Item number two, consider approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on October 19th, 2021. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Br- uh, I'm sorry, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number three, consider review of the preliminary tax levy.
Thank you, Trustee Brennan. Per the Board's direction, the tax levy was prepared with a 1% increase over the prior year's filed levy. I'm happy to take any questions that may exist.
Any questions from the Board? Trustee Brady?
No questions.
No? Well, as such, I don't really have any questions, Trustee Mueller.
No, thanks for taking our direction, Andrew. Appreciate it.
Very good. Well, is there a motion to move this to the Village Board?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Thank you, Trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number four, receive a presentation of the fiscal year 2021 annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, I'll take that one as well. The Village was able to get its annual audit done on time this year, first time in three years. It was due October 31st. We got it in just in the 27th, or last Friday. Everything filed with the counties as well as the state. A copy of the final was provided to all the Board electronically. There will be printed copies available. Please contact the Finance Department if you would like a printed copy. And then, I would like to note that the auditors are required to have a presentation as well. So again, just knowing that it's been filed with the other agencies, we wanted our Board to have that document as well at their disposal should anything come up or it be disseminated, that you don't have to wait for the auditors. They were unable to make it this evening, but I've got to imagine they're going to be out here before the end of the calendar year to have the formal presentation as required. I'm happy to take any questions about the fiscal year 21 audit.
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. Anyone from the Board have any questions for Andrew? There are none. Thanks for getting that done, Andrew. Appreciate you getting it done on time. I don't think we need a motion, right? Item number five, consider rebuild Illinois funds resolution. Andrew?
Yes, as part of the MFT distribution that the Village receives, when Governor Pritzker passed the large infrastructure bill, the rebuild Illinois bill, the Village became eligible for certain funds. Those funds are distributed based on calculations and a distribution from the state through IDOT. These funds are coming through IDOT because they're governed very similarly to MFT, which is why we're asking the Board to consider a resolution for the use of these funds. Working with Public Works on how these best fit, the rebuild Illinois funds that we received thus far will be for the 80th Avenue project, which encompasses not only 80th Avenue, but also the bridge.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any questions regarding item number five? Is there a motion to move this to the Village Board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number six, consider development agreement with Loyola Health University System. Kimberly?
Thank you. Good evening. So, we've been working diligently with the Loyola Medicine Group, as you all may know. They went to Plan Commission last week with their site plan for a 70,000 square foot, two-story medical campus. As part of this, the Village, a few years ago, took a strategic initiative to spur development on the west end of our community along La Grange Road, which is vastly now farmed land. The reason why a lot of that land is still open is that the utilities there aren't able to serve the properties without a substantial cost. So, the Village took that initiative, put it in their plans. The Public Works and Engineering Department have since designed those utilities with the hopes that development would come. We did have a consideration a few years back, prior to COVID, where we did have a hotel looking to locate, and that was one of the challenges, was how do we get infrastructure to them and the timing of all that. So unfortunately, that deal kind of fell through or is on pause at the moment, but nonetheless, we still kept moving forward with our plan and getting the infrastructure designed. One of the challenges we had is that a lift station is needed, and we need land for that lift station. So, we looked at several locations based on, you know, gravity and all those wonderful things that engineers have to figure out where a lift station should go, and we're trying to find a partner on helping us, and we found that partner with Loyola. And in that, they are willing to give us a 75-foot by 75 easement on their land for the construction of a lift station, a permanent easement. And in addition, we would be running the water and sewer lines from 183rd Street north to 179th Street, opening up that corridor essentially for development. And while we were negotiating the easement agreement, they did come forth with their plan and would be utilizing those services for their development. And so, recognizing this partnership and the timing of everything, we've put forth a development agreement, and that's what's before you as far as the key terms in the DA that we'd like to have considered at the next Village Board meeting. And so, again, what we've come to is that essentially, an easement is being granted to the Village for that lift station, and that the request is to waiver some of the building permit fees only for a $35 million construction cost build for their project, which would equate to around $293,000. All third-party reviews would still be paid by the development and any other separate items that would come along with a permit. They are also going to be constructing for the benefit of the Village's water system, a 12-inch water main that runs east and west that would create a looped system that in return for them constructing that, we would waive a tap-on fee that we would normally assess for any new development. We charge a tap-on fee. So that's where you'll see the tap-on fees being waived in the amount of $126,000, and that's because of the size of the tap is what's triggering that fee based on what we've recently updated our fees to a year or so ago. In addition, the property is going to pay their proportionate share of the water and sewer that's being brought to the site, and based on the acreage, using just the linear square feet and their acreage, they would be paying around $345,000. They asked for a slight reduction on that, and that's what's also presented in the development agreement. They are looking to bring this site in operation by 2023, so they do have a short window. So this is something we will be seeing here in short order, and so, we're here to kind of just discuss that all with you, and hopefully you're familiar with the site as it is presented with the plan, which you'll be seeing later tonight at the Village Board meeting. But this is our first conversation as a whole on those terms of the agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Kimberly. I'll just say, I know that this station that we're going to need over there is, you know, vital to the development of that area, so I, you know, I think this is absolutely in our best interest, that pumping station. And I think, I think this is going to spur a lot of additional development over there, so I think this is absolutely the right way to go. My only question is, I just, is this comparable to some of these incentives can you get for the next Board meeting? Incentives that we've given to, like DuPage, DuPage Medical? Is that, I know this is a little different with as far as the water line. Yeah, the water line, but I just wanted to take a look at that before this is approved, so.
Okay.
But that was my only question, so. Any other questions from the Board down there?
No question, but a comment that, great to see it getting done. I know we put it on hold because of the hotel that we had hoped to put in that area as well, you know, and they pulled out the last minute, so thank you much. This is going to be great for our community.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for the Village, for Loyola. It's going to be a great addition.
Trustee Sullivan?
Just, I agree with everyone in creating a lot of job opportunities too for the area, so I think it's, sounds good.
President Glatz?
Thank you, Bill. I just want to say that, you know, this Board made this a priority to get this lift station up and running for future development, so thank you to this Board for supporting it. We worked extremely hard on this, and I want to say, I want to thank Kimberly and John and our Public Works Department and Hannah and Pat and our legal team for everything that we did to get this to where it's at. That section of town couldn't go forward without this, so I just really appreciate all the work everyone's done on this. This is going to be, make a huge impact for the area, for the other businesses around it. So, thank you, everyone.
Trustee Mueller?
Much the same as the Mayor. Thank you to everybody that was involved in this, especially Public Works and Kimberly and your team. When this was presented to us a couple of years back, there wasn't a lot of good options, and so, the fact that we were able to find one with Loyola really speaks volumes to, you know, the Village being able to work with them and their team and get this one over the finish line. So, looking forward to seeing this at the next Village Board, and really looking forward to see Loyola move into that spot. I think they're going to be, do very well there, and it'll be a nice addition to the community.
Very good. Trustee Galante?
I think everything's pretty much been said. I agree 100%, and this is going to be a great addition.
Very good. Well, thank you, Kimberly.
So the motion we'd like to have the Board consider is sending this to the November 16th Village Board, the development agreement for adoption.
So I will make a motion to move this to the November 16th Village Board meeting.
Is there a second? Trustee Brady, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item seven, consider recapture ordinance for certain properties located in between 179th Street and 183rd Street West of 94th Avenue for water, sewer, and lift station improvements.
Okay. So now that we, you know, have these utilities somewhat finalized, the next step for the Village is to place an overall recapture agreement on all those properties that in the future may benefit from these utilities. It's common practice when a Village goes ahead and puts infrastructure in, or similarly, a developer sometimes will extend public improvements on behalf of the Village and ask for recapture from those properties that develop. So this is just establishing that recapture ordinance. We've highlighted in a map here all those properties that are expected to utilize those services, and from, based on their acreage, we've created a recapture amount. This just memorializes this always at the end of the day, if we get a development and they, and they want to negotiate, we always have that option, but this kind of just puts this out there and gives us an opportunity, so when the properties develop, they're well, they know the recapture owed to them. Again, the Village is investing around $2.4 million into this infrastructure, and we're just looking to eventually, you know, those that benefit from it pay a proportionate share, so this would just be that ordinance. This is just a first, you know, discussion. We still have to finalize some legal descriptions, but we feel we can have that ready for the next November 16th to formally adopt the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Kimberly. Any questions from the Board?
Add something to say, Bill? Again, thank you, Kimberly. I think you and Hannah worked on this a lot together, so thanks again, and, you know, we wouldn't be sitting where we're at today with that development if it wasn't for the relationship with Loyola. We have Advocate on the west side of La Grange. Now, we're going to have Loyola on the east side of La Grange. I think that is a huge improvement in development for the residents to have options, so thank you.
I'd like to thank Colby Zemitis, too. He was a great partner in really helping us put these numbers together.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Is there a motion to?
I'll move the recapture agreement to the Village Board meeting on November 16th.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Consider, item number eight, consider contract for LED street lighting replacement. Phase five, John?
Yes, sir, thank you. This request is for the committee to approve a bid that went out for phase five of the LED street lighting program. This is the fifth phase, which up to date has installed over 1,700 streetlights in town. Annually, we are approximately 200-plus. Went out to bid, we had five respondents. The lowest bidder was H&amp;H Electric out of Franklin Park. With our available budget of $400,000, we're requesting approval of a contract with them for $368,999.
Very good. Thank you, John. This is expenditure funds. Anyone have any questions on this? Is there a motion to move this one to the Village Board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider the water rate study.
I'll take that one. Thank you, Trustee Brennan. This is more so of a heads-up that the Village has asked three qualified consultants to send us proposals to conduct a water rate study. Last time that the Village had a water rate study completed was in 2009. At that time, a five-year rate schedule was approved, which ended in 2014. Since then, the only increases that have occurred are just your increases that go along with the Oaklawn and Chicago rate increases. This past April, there was a 50-cent increase to the water rates with the, you know, with the understanding that a water rate study would need to be completed in the near future. Our water funds, it's just our worst fund. It simply can't, you know, last much longer without having this study completed to see where our rates really should be, so that way it can self-sustain the way it ultimately should work. So, again, just kind of a heads-up that you'll have some proposals coming at you here in the near future in order to get this water rate study started.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions from the Board?
Hannah, can we get ahold of the last study that was done? Can you share that with us?
Yeah, of course.
All right. Item number 10, consider engineering contract for post-five construction. John?
Yes, sir, thank you. This contract is with Burke Engineering as a second phase of the construction of post-five our lift station at 170th and 80th Avenue. Previously, you've approved the design engineering. We did go out to bid, committee and Board approval for the bid costs, and now this is for the request for the construction and observation from Christopher Burke Engineering at an amount of $29,500.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the Board? There are none. Is there a motion to move this one to the Village Board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number 11, consider sole source purchase and installation of pumps at post-six sanitary sewer.
Thank you, sir. This is a emergency replacement request for the rain events that occurred last week, 10/25 and 26. We had multiple failures on the pumps that work at the post-six, 162nd and 84th Avenue lift station. We were able to crutch by during the storms, but we are in imminent need of replacing the pumps. Both of them were a reduced rate for purchasing simultaneously at an amount quoted at $40,172.80. Xylem Water Solutions has worked with us many times in the past, and we recommend getting the emergency purchase through them.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the Board?
John, how long will it take to change it over?
They, because of the emergency nature of this, we requested a, an order be placed with the hold on, obviously, committee and Board approval, but they said that we should hopefully see them in the next week or two.
Oh, great. Okay.
Was this due to be replaced soon, or is this old?
They, that lift station was rebuilt probably about five or six years ago, but due to some of the issues we have in that sanitary station at that location, you know, it's one of our issues with sanitary stations is the flushable wipes that are not essentially flushable. They, they cause our older pumps a lot of issues. Now, newer technology is offered, you know, better pumps with chopping solution, but, you know, it really burned them out a lot quicker than their expectant life when they were installed.
Very good. Any other questions?
Maybe we should post some pictures, John, of the, that the wipes don't work. Maybe make, maybe they would appreciate it a little bit more and not use them.
There's plenty of case photos out there, believe me.
Thanks.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to move this one to the Village Board meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you, Trustee Mahoney.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number 12, consider exceptions to Section 2.11 of the Personnel Manual, Dual Capacity Employment.
I'll take that one, Trustee Brennan. As we know, Andrew is leaving us in a couple of weeks, and Eileen is retiring at the end of December, so our one and two Finance Department positions will be vacant shortly. We are advertising for those, but for continuity of operations for us, we're recommending that Hannah Lippman, our Assistant Village Manager, hold a dual capacity as interim treasurer, as to ensure some signatory things are taken care of for, you know, the Village on that. So we're recommending for her to be appointed to interim treasurer.
Very good. Thank you, Pat. Any questions from the Board? Hannah, thank you for taking on more responsibilities.
Another hat.
Hopefully very short. I'll go, is there a motion to move this one to the Village Board?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number 12, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number 13, consider staff agreement for various finance-related projects.
I'll take that one also. This is sort of piggybacking on the previous item. We're having an agreement from our former Finance Director and Treasurer, Brad Bettenhausen. He's making a return to the bench, and we're asking the Board to consider his consulting agreement to help us with some critical projects that we have coming up with our bond issue, finishing up, you know, our budget coming into the new budget season and other various projects that we have. So, we're, in front of you will be a six-month agreement not to exceed $90,000, and it'll be starting next week if approved.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, I did, Bill.
Sure.
I just want to thank Pat for calling Brad out of the bullpen, and we won't miss a beat, and I appreciate, Pat, you acting quickly and swiftly to assure that there is no lapse or delays in anything, and so we will, we'll be fine, so thanks, Pat.
Very good. Any other questions? Comments? Your motion to move item number 13 to the Village Board.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number 13, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries. Item number 14, consider legislative consulting agreements.
I'll take that one. You have two agreements that are for you from the same group, government, or Cornerstone Government Affairs. Back last month, we were asked to testify to the Senate Subcommittee hearing on horse racing with Senator Cunningham, both Paul O'Grady and Mayor Glotz and myself. And what came out of that was we realized what complex regulations that are out there at the state trying to get different things to happen out at the mental health center. So we went out and with the veto session that came in, into play this past couple of weeks, we had some critical items in there, and we reached out to a group, the Cornerstone Group out of Washington, to assist us in the veto session. It was very successful with some of the work that they did, so we're continuing with their services for the next eleven months to assist us with, number one, the mental health center with the complex nature of the state purchase or potential purchase. We're resetting talks with them to discuss this, so this is critical time for us coming up, and then also general matters for, for the village in Springfield. So they did real well for us in the veto session, and you have the two agreements in front of you to, to hopefully approve, to assist us, which we hope is going to be a, you know, a good year coming up here in January at the legislative session to try to get things moving again out at the state property.
Very good. Thank you, Pat. Any questions from the board? Is there such a motion to move these items to the board?
I'll make a motion to move these two contracts to the board.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Mueller. Do I have a second? Trustee Brady? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number fourteen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. That item will carry. Item number fifteen, consider liability insurance. Hannah?
I'll take that one. This item isn't on tonight's board agenda at all. It will be on, on the board agenda for November sixteenth. That's when we'll need a final decision, but we wanted to present to you some options as it relates to liability and workers' comp insurance. We've been working internally for the past several months. So just kind of as a means of history a little bit, I know most of the board is here, but for our newer trustees, the village was with Irma since the nineteen ninety's, but in twenty-eighteen, we did switch to ICRMT. Now that we've been with ICRMT for the last three years, you know, that's sufficient claims history to kind of take a look back, do an analysis, see where we're at in terms of costs, and look at what's financially responsible for the village moving forward. So looking at our claims history and some of the costs that we've incurred, we wanted to see what our other options would be out there in the market. So we approached various groups. So we first and foremost asked the line Mesro to get renewal costs for ICRMT and to also look at the market. We did approach Irma, our previous carrier, but in terms of timing and some of the concerns about coverages, that wasn't really going to work out for us either. We also approached SLIP, a northern, a north, northwestern community in a school pool. They don't really have a means of allowing new members at this time, so that wasn't a viable option. We asked Horton to go to the market. They did come back to us with a workers' comp quote. Unfortunately, the other lines and just sort of the timing weren't, weren't well received in the market, but we did get a workers' comp quote from that. We also reached out to IML, the Illinois Municipal League's RMA, municipal, excuse me, municipal pool, which has about six hundred and eighty clients in it. So with that being said, we wanted to kind of present where we're at in terms of financials and what the options would be. You know, right now, based on numbers and, you know, forgive me, we didn't have final quotes, so this is sort of the first time that you'll be hearing these numbers and whatnot. But ICRMT did come back with a premium at seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which is a slight decrease from where they were this past year. They did retain their same deductibles or self-insured retention limits, which are fairly high. For example, the workers' comp line is three hundred thousand dollars, and that's really where you see a lot of the cost and exposures we've had over the last several years is under these high deductibles. IML came back with a quote at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. All lines of insurance came back at zero with workers' comp being a hundred thousand. Horton had two options, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible or a zero, zero deductible. For the two hundred and fifty thousand deductible, that was at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. For the five hundred, or for the zero workers' comp deductible, that was at five hundred and eight thousand. So with that being said, you know, right now, it looks like the IML and the ICRMT, you know, quotes are the most competitive. We've been going back and forth, you know, with help of the mayor and PJM to kind of look at these numbers and see what would be the best financially for the village. So again, we kind of wanted to bring this to the board to see, you know, what the taste is for risk. Again, some of these concerns were with the, the high deductibles. You know, when we switched from Irma to ICRMT, we went from a fifty thousand dollar to, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar deductibles. And looking back at our claims over the last several years, we think that if we had a lower, say, one hundred thousand dollar deductible for workers' comp, we would have saved, on average, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. And in terms of all other lines of liability, close to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. So those are some significant savings. So, you know, kind of presenting that option, or these options and where we're at, kind of wanted to open it up to the board and see if you have any thoughts on potentially switching carriers, and again, sort of what the risk tolerance is, if we prefer these lower deductibles, and where to go from here.
Very good.
Sorry, it's a lot of information, lots of moving pieces.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate all your, your work on this, Hannah. You get, you've done a lot of heavy lifting on this, so it's, it's been a long process, and, you know, I'll just say from the get-go, I think, you know, it was before I was on the board that they switched to this, but I think this is, you know, a huge deal. That would be, that was one of the contributing factors that, you know, made me decide to want to run, because this is, it was a huge deductible. In, in our line of business, you know, we have construction equipment, police, firemen, all these, you know, laborious jobs that are going to have these claims inevitably. So I think this is going to be a, a good program for us. I'm looking, you know, forward to, you know, seeing their full proposal, but I would certainly be in favor of this. I think it makes the most sense financially for the village. I think it'll save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, it, it's obviously going to help us. I mean, they, you know, from what I've, what I've seen, they've proposed, you know, giving us, waiving some, some premium, premium dollars on the public officials' liability, which was, I knew was going to be a problem back in two thousand and eighteen when we had to buy that tail coverage. They are willing to contribute that for us too, which I think is a, you know, a really good, good faith sign. So I think this is a, a really great proposal for us. I think this is something we should pursue, and, you know, I appreciate all, all your work on it, so thanks for putting it together. Any other questions from the board?
I would suggest, Bill, before anyone, before you opening up to the board, Dave from IML is here. If you would like to let him speak and maybe, maybe it'll make it easier for them for questions. You want to?
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Would you like me to do a real brief overview, or do you have any questions up front?
Um, yeah, brief, brief overview for, for most of them that...
Fantastic. We're part of the Illinois Municipal League. We're governed by village presidents and mayors all throughout Illinois. We only write municipalities. We don't write counties. We don't write truckers. We specialize in municipalities. We have, as of last night, six hundred and eighty-five municipalities, municipalities in the state of Illinois insured in our program. We've been here since about nineteen eighty-one. We're very financially secure with sixty million dollars plus in surplus. So we are the largest writer of Illinois municipalities in the state, or in the country, wherever you want to slice it up. I think some things, I'd just like to start out by thanking the mayor, Hannah, Pat, the entire team. As an underwriter, I underwrite for our, for our municipality, for our group. You can really tell the municipalities that have a professional setup. And the detail you went into, the team went into, in trying to identify the best deductible for your municipality has not been seen by me since I've been here. So you're clearly the best in class. And just to explain that, just for one second, most insurance carriers will say, we'd like you to have a three hundred thousand dollar deductible, because it's good for us. But we sat down with your team and said, where's the sweet spot with your losses that make the most sense for your municipality? And that's how we came up with that hundred thousand dollar deductible on work comp and zero deductible on all other lines. From a loss perspective, that made the most sense for your municipality and for your financial results. I guess this one, other thing I'd like to add is, right off the bat, we had a meeting of the minds on defense, defense and defending frivolous lawsuits. I thought, actually, the group was going in a different direction where they wanted us to settle claims, and I remember saying, if you want us to settle these claims, we're not your guy. There's other people out there that'll settle claims just because it's cheaper for them. But our philosophy is we want to defend claims because it's not only good for you, but the next municipality down the street and the one down the street from there. So because all we do is municipalities, six hundred and eighty-five of them, we do our best we can to make the right decisions, and that's in conjunction with you. That's just a brief overview. I can be happy to give you more information. Is that about what you're looking for?
Yeah. That's great. I think what we'll do is we'll just start down here with trustee Brady, see if he's got any questions, and we'll go down the line.
No, I think we was all cleared up and everything you had said, trustee, I agree with you.
Very good. Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, I think it sounds really great. I think the state that we're in and the situations that we've run across over this period of time with the lawsuits in particular, I think it's a great idea.
Very good. Trustee Sullivan?
Same thing. I appreciate the time that's been put into this and really to choose something that's in the best interest of us and taxpayers as well, so thank you to everyone involved in that.
Clerk Theriault?
I have nothing to add.
Mayor Glotz?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. First, I want to say also, Dave, thank you. It wasn't mentioned, but depending on how things change for the village, whether, if it's better or worse, IML is also willing, in the middle of the contract, to prorate it and switch to deductibles if it works better for the village, not for them, but for the village. So say, if one line item, you want to increase or decrease the deductibles, they're willing to do that and prorate what we've paid, which is, which is a huge savings. They also said that they'll lock our rates in for two years. We won't have to worry about rate increase. Also, one of the things that stuck out to me in our meetings was, they haven't raised their premium in five years. So six hundred and, I think you said eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Six hundred and eighty-five customers have not had to worry about adjusting their budget because of the unknown. They've gone five straight years, and we're guaranteed another two years. The other thing is, piggyback off of what you said, Bill, they also, because of that lack of insurance to tail coverage, which most, I don't know if, most people know about the insurance if you, when you leave one carrier to another, if, depending on how their coverage was written, ours was written as that we would need tail coverage, that's an additional fifty thousand dollars that they also have waived to go to them, which is another additional savings. And I think Hannah, I think you under, I, I think you underestimated some of the numbers on the savings.
That's conservative.
Yep, I appreciate that. We know it's a lot more. And then the other thing I wanted to also add is, the premium was originally one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I asked them if they could relook at this again and lower it. I still would like it a little lower, even though we're saving money. And they came back, and they sent us an email that they lowered it an additional hundred and fifty-five thousand to nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, correct?
That's correct.
So then Hannah and I tried one more time. We figure instead of a hundred thousand deductible for comp, they're being so nice, maybe we can get that. So it was for, for the zero for the liability for all the vexatious litigants lawsuits, there was a zero deductible, then we had a hundred thousand for workman's comp. If we would've went to zero across the board, that would've been one million three hundred and ninety thousand, is that correct? And so we figured Hannah and I were like, eh, maybe we can get them down to like one point two, and we can go zero across the board, then this way, we would never have to worry about budgeting or worrying about any cost, because it wouldn't come out of our pocket, it's a set amount. They didn't bite. They responded back politely. It's still one million three hundred and ninety, but the only thing we have to worry about is workman's comp of a hundred thousand dollars. I think you guys did a phenomenal job. Hannah and Pat and Paul, I appreciated working with you guys and your team. We didn't get to deal with Brad Cole as much as the CEO, because he was busy down fighting in Springfield for us, which he did extremely well. Maybe Pat can give an update on that, on how that worked, how they did down there with the gaming. Excellent job again by IML. And so my estimates, I think we're going to look at, from everything you've, you're throwing in and, and no increases, I think conservatively, we're looking at six fifty, seven hundred thousand a year, that we don't have to worry about the unknown. So that's all I said, so thank you for all the work. Again, we still have some stuff, you know, to work on, but we're...
We're headed in the right direction.
On the right road.
Um, Dave, quick question. Who are your other larger municipalities?
Yeah, most of our larger municipalities are in the thirty thousand population range. City of Alton, Marion, Pekin, they're, they're some of our larger municipalities we have in the program right now. I will say this, though, we've recently started the large deductible program that we've been talking about with the larger deductibles. So we've had a lot of interest from larger municipalities since Brad Cole came over. Brad's been a great leader, a great CEO, and he was able to allow us to look at these larger deductibles. So we're really entering into the larger municipality range in the last two or three years or so.
Very good.
I have one more thing, Bill.
Sure.
Can you just briefly discuss, Dave, what we discussed it? Let's just say, God forbid, the bills were outrageous, and the, the comp cases were just coming in. You also offered a new plan where we could top ourselves out. There's a minimum to top. Can you just give a, in case things got...
Yeah, it's a really interesting plan. We call it our mid-max program, and it's minimum, maximum. And what that means is, when you have a large deductible, even a hundred thousand dollars, and I want to say, God forbid, I'm an insurance guy, I'm very conservative, but three hundred thousand dollar deductible per claim, right? You don't know if you're going to have one claim or ten claims that chew up that three hundred thousand. Your history hasn't shown ten, but you could. So this mid-max program says, we will give you a percentage off, and we can talk about what, again, makes sense for you and your municipality. It's typically twenty to thirty percent off of the flat rate, and that'll be your minimum. So if your loss is coming low, you pay the minimum going in. Then you pay up dollar, dollar to a maximum. So regardless of the number of losses you have, you know your top end point is X. Let's call that one point four million, where your minimum may be, call it eight hundred thousand. So there's a range in there that if you, your losses are below this level, you pay the minimum. As they go up, you pay dollar for dollar back to us, but then if you go through the roof, if you have those ten claims, we eat that, and you know what your maximum is. And a lot of our larger municipalities, just about every one of our larger municipalities are in that program, and they like to know, worst-case scenario, I'm paying this no matter what happens. So we can work on that as well. We've been really focusing on the deductibles, but it might be a good option for you and your, your municipality.
Thanks, Dave. I just wanted to mention that. I think the, staff and I discussed, I think the best thing to do is just get in there. If the board chooses to do so, get their feet wet, get to know, get to know them a little bit better, and if that's, works for the village, that's something that we can address. But there is another option. If we were having bad claims, there's an option to, to limit the damage.
Correct. Very good. Trustee Mueller?
You stole my question, so I will ignore that one. And then, no, I think this hundred thousand dollar deductible is right in our sweet spot. I think this is the risk tolerance that we want to have. Over the last couple of years, we've learned that things that can go wrong have gone wrong, and so putting us back at this good playing field, I think, makes a lot of sense. So the high-low is certainly interesting. I'd, I'd say hold off on that until we give this hundred thousand dollar deductible a chance for a year or two.
Very good. Trustee Galante?
I feel the same. My biggest issue when we changed was the high deductible, so going back down is what I'd like to see too. And if hundred thousand is what you found is the right spot, then it seems reasonable to me.
Very good. Any, any questions from staff for Dave, or no? Very good.
Thank you.
Dave, thanks so much for coming out.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll continue to work internally. We'll have, you know, a final discussion at the next cow, and then ultimately are drop dead, because we have a December first plan here currently anyways, so next meeting, we have to make a final decision, so we don't need any action tonight. Again, we just wanted to get the discussion started, so it's not sprung on you last minute.
Well, real quick, can you just spread something? Is it, do we need a separation time from ICRMT if we, how long is that?
We've already, yeah. We've already hit on that.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, we'll meet that requirement, though? Okay. Very good. That's it. Item number sixteen, receive comments from the public. Anyone like to address the board? You can come up if you want to address the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come from a long line of fire and police, family and cousins and whatnot, so I was actively in, in the fire department, fire service for about, about nineteen years, never full-time, unfortunately. So I have a gift of certain things. I lived in the village for roughly, oh, first of all, my first name is Dennis, last name is McClintock. I used to reside on one seventy-two oh eight sixty-sixth court. Lived here for about eleven years after I lost my house. I miss the village dearly. I miss the village dearly. I watch all that goes on, obviously, like everybody else. You see the news, you see this, you see that. I also listen to a scanner and I hear all that goes on. Unfortunately, one of the channels I have is Stanley Park. And I just shake my head. So, my thing is, that I've been, been bugging me, because my kids brought this up years ago when we lived, and I'm like, what's that? Oh, you don't know what that is? And I'm like, no. Well, that's that street down over there. We refer to it as Doper's Highway or whatever. And I'm like, what? And that would be Forest Avenue, over by where the ABC Roofing Company was off of Ridgeland and whatever that is there.
Forest Avenue.
Yeah, Ridgeland and Forest Avenue. So, after hearing all this stuff and, and whatnot, I just, I guess a recommendation, whether it means anything or not, there's a great influx of, of things that come down that road there. Why? Unfortunately, you're surrounded by, obviously, all your major highways, I-80, 294, I-57, easy access, easy on, easy off, and out the door you go. Obviously, cutting down Forest Avenue, you get right there on 167, now you can go where you want, 294, I-80, 57, wherever, and they're gone. And just like that. So, my recommendation was to bring to the village, if they'd be interested or consider, would be closing that entrance of the roadway down with J-Wall or something to prevent the circumstances that happen. They just had two other things happen in the last couple of weeks. Individuals with weapons and whatnot running around out there and other things. When I lived here, there was two other circumstances. There was a standoff and they took off down that road and in the field and over here and that's, you know, one of a couple of times. So, my suggestion would be to close off the roadway from the corner of Ridgeland and Forest Reserve Drive, all the way down out towards, towards Central Avenue, not allowing, putting J-Wall up, not digging up the road, obviously. This way, if Metro or someone else needed to get in there, they, all they have to do is take a truck and push them out of the way and they move. I know that for a fact with my years, with, I worked for IDOT for about 12 years as a snowbird and plowing snow and this and that, but they move. They can be moved. Car, not so much, but more or less a deterrent to prevent any of these access, quick accesses out of the village and allowing stuff back into the village. It's, in my opinion, I don't think it's accessed anymore. That was mainly used for the roofing company and Pandora to allow larger trucks to come in through the village and up through there to get into the village without having to travel to the village limits and in and out and whatnot. I can't see it for an ambulance route.
Yeah, so, so there's a lot more to, to unwrap there. Do you, do you need an extension of time? Your three minutes is up, so.
All right. No, I just, I just thought if you could shut it down, this would kind of help you guys out a little bit and, and prevent some of the ongoing stuff that goes on here.
Okay. Well, what we can do is, we can have Pat reach out to you if you'd like. Pat and, and the, and the police chief to, to discuss this further.
If they'd like, sure. I mean, it's just an idea and I've been kicking it around and, you know, and then after, like I said, listening to some of the stuff that's going on, I was like, you know what? I'm going to, I called the village and I said, oh, you know what? You, you need to go to the village hall and talk to them. That, that was really interesting, so.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be, you know, helpful if, Pat, if you want to have someone reach out to him. Okay.
Can you, in the back, Lisa Valley, Officer King, can you leave your number with Lisa